Everybody's ready, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:35. And welcome everyone, we have a nice audience tonight, welcome everyone to our Zoom Board of Selectmen's Meeting, held remotely as a result of the Governor's Executive Orders. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the regular meeting held on March 9th, 2021.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from the March 9th, 2021 meeting.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Audience of Citizens, is there any business to come before the board tonight?
Uh, Angus?
Yep.
This is Jane Samuels.
Hi Jane.
Elm Street, hi. Um, and I've had both my shots, so I'm very happy about that.
Good for you.
I have one comment and then a question. Um, I'm not really crazy about those lines that have been put in by, I guess they got your permission to put them in around town? On the roads?
I don't know what lines you're talking about Jane.
The little rumble strip in the, in this, yeah, I, I hope they aren't gonna extend any farther.
Well, um, to say that they got my permission would not quite be 100% accurate, I did have to sign off on that, but that was after a couple of three months of arguing with the state about whether or not they were supposed to be here.
And you lost the argument, I take it?
Yeah. It is a state highway and they do have jurisdiction over that.
Right, right, I understand that. I'm, I'm just really glad they don't have them right in front of my house, but.
Yep, I don't, I am too. They're, they're trying to, they're talking about doing that when they're repaving Route 145, I think is gonna be paved this year. Or this year or next, and it's the same argument is beginning again, so we're gonna try to.
Well.
Try to work, try to work with our legislators to have a better result.
Well, good luck. Um, a question about this money for the economic development. Um, I thought that we had had a survey done a number of years ago and I just wonder why we're putting out this money again. And then two, about the same thing. Um, I, I, I hope we'd concentrate on getting, filling some of the empty places on Main Street. And three, I understand that a lot of that information is free from the state. If you can, if you can find it, I, I spoke to somebody who had been on economic development and she had volunteered to dig that information out. Um, and three, if you, four, if there's a survey, is there any way to utilize the same company that works for planning and zoning? Can you use them in some way instead of paying out a lot of money which we probably don't really have right now with, you know, some people are gonna have trouble meeting their taxes.
Yep, Jane, those are, some of those are pretty good questions, and some of those will be answered in the, when we actually start talking about the, the, uh, the commission on the next item on the agenda, but uh, let me see if I can go down your list and you can ask, you can answer. And I'm sure I can't remember them in order. In order to use the folks that are, that are, are, are are planning and zoning, zoning enforcement officers, in order to use them to conduct a survey, will be additional fees because those are not part of the scope of work that they are hired to do. Number one, number two, they're not qualified to do that type of thing. Um, I think one of your other questions had to do with money spent on an earlier survey. I'm not aware of that survey, I know that many years ago, we did, we did some, some work and some survey questions regarding the plan of conservation and development many years ago. And this is, this is going to, and again, I'll, I'll speak to that a little bit more later on in the next item on the agenda. Regarding information from the state, um, I'm not sure what information the state can give us if we're surveying the population of the town to find out the town's interests and the town's concerns and the town's desire for how this town moves forward. So I, I'm not sure if there's information out there Jane, and somebody has access to it, and they certainly would be welcome to try and provide, to try and, and would love to see it. That's, that's the whole reason for the survey, is to get information about how the town moves forward. As far as, what was the, that was three out of the four.
I think that they should just concentrate on trying to fill some of the.
Well, that's, that's a great thing, that's a great thing Jane, but you know, um, I think that the, the owners of the property are working to, to fill those spaces, we certainly are doing everything we can to help them fill those spaces and EDC is, is doing that, if you go to the EDC website, you'll see all of the empty spaces in town, which are not very many, especially if you, uh, if you look at surrounding communities. You'll see that the EDC is doing everything that they can to advertise those spaces. If there's anything more that they can do, um, in order to, uh, help fill those spaces. Give us some ideas, give us your thoughts, we can't rent them ourselves. We certainly are advertising them as much as we can, so.
Um, one, one other question, because after you start your discussion, I don't know whether you'd let us comment, is what is the objective of this survey? What do they, what in particular do they want to see from this survey?
Well, I think we can let Peter Lewis speak to that specifically, since he's here tonight, but we've also, I can tell you that this, this, again, we're gonna talk now a little bit about what's on item four on the agenda, but my, uh, my intent, my intent is to have the Economic Development Commission work with the Planning and Zoning Commission, the chairs of each get together and, and the Board of Selectmen to review, hire this group to conduct this survey. That group will put together a list of questions, we will review those questions, make sure that they're heading, that they're asking the questions that we think need to be asked. Those questions might be something along the lines of where would you like to see, would you like to see any more commercial development in town? If so, you know, where would you like to see it? What would you like to see happen up in Winthrop? What would you like to see happen down at the Landman? What would you like to, would you like to see more town parks? You know, what kind of industry would you welcome here? What kind of industry would you resist here? Questions that would be put together in a much better way than I just recited, but questions with that focus, how, how the town would like to work to move forward, how the townspeople would like to move forward. I think that that kind, if you work with the Planning and Zoning Commission, that, those questions, a lot of the questions that will come into that will be incorporated and hopefully suggested by the Planning and Zoning and the zoning enforcement officers to help us as we update our plan of conservation and development. So, um, that's, that's my answer to that question.
Um, I'd like to make one comment. My brother in Michigan, um, does employment surveys and he might, I mean, I know he's busy, but he might be able to help formulate questions that are more focused on whatever. You, you, I mean, he may just say, this is to open a question, or this is a very good question to ask.
That's why we're hiring a professional Jane, that's, that's the whole idea, is to hire someone to do this, and that's why we need some, some money.
Oh, they would, they would formulate the questions, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, we would give them the, the focus of what we want to ask, and they would, they would make the questions.
Oh, I thought you said, uh, Board of Selectmen, uh, Economic Development and Planning and Zoning were gonna be formulating the questions.
I did, but I also followed that up with, and then we would give them to the professional people to make them.
Aha, okay. I, I, I really do question having, spending this money at this point in time. That's just me.
Yep, thank you. Um, well, is there anyone else?
Oh, there I am, yes, um, I know we have no control, but I heard that the bridge out there by Deep River Farms, they're gonna close both lanes at the same time?
Yes, they have to, um, I, I don't know the dates right now, but they're posted on the website and they're posted in the, uh, you know, most recent newsletter, I think it's going to close for 69 days, starting a couple of days after school closes, and then, um, opening up before school opens up again.
Alright, um, go ahead Jane.
Is, is there a detour around that? Cause that's where my, out there is where my horse is.
The state has a detour going down to Iverton.
Oh wow.
That was, that was kind of my, my lead in to my question, um. Any thought process on how we can keep steering people toward town? Cause I know that's, that's a main route and a lot of people travel down there, get gas, get whatever before they jump on Route 9.
I know.
And we're gonna, we're gonna lose, we're gonna lose all that traffic.
Yep, we're, um, we're working with the state all the time to try to figure out how to speed the project up as much as we can.
And, and again, I understand it's out of your hands, but it's just a question I had to ask because it's, I'm sure it's gonna impact the town dearly.
We've been asking that question for a couple of years now, and we're really doing everything we can to try and make that go as fast as we can.
What were you saying Jim?
No, I, I agree with you 100%, I know one of the ideas was possibly to make them work at night, um, or whatever, but then, then you, then you got neighbors that are around there that might not like that, so it's, it's not, it's not gonna be a simple, it's not gonna be simple, it's not gonna be good for anybody, ultimately, the only good thing is we're gonna have a bridge.
Yeah.
And again, I, I understand that, just, it's, it's not gonna be good for town, that's all.
Yeah.
I, I hear you Gary, and there's some ultimate sacrifices that everyone's gonna have to make here. And, um, I think I've been very vocal with Angus on this since it started, uh, when it originally came to a proposal almost two years ago. Cause my biggest concern was, uh, right on the other side of that bridge is the ambulance barn.
That's right.
Okay, and what happens to you or I Gary out here and, or Joyce, you know, us people on the hillbilly section of Winthrop here?
Me too.
That was, you know, that was my biggest concern, and they talked about putting an ambulance on the other side of the, the bridge there for us out here, because again, that five minute detour could be the life and death situation for us people out in Winthrop. Jimmy too, you're right there. So that was one of my bank, main concerns, and, um, it just hap, it just happens that one of the contractors that's gonna be doing the job, I, I know them and we've been in talks with them of how we can speed up this, um, situation, get this bridge done quicker. And yes, there is a few houses in that neighborhood that will be impacted, but you know, we're, we're trying to figure a method of, you know, there's, there's pile that have to be driven, steel pile, and those make noise. So you drive the pile during the daytime, in nighttime you, you weld them. But you know, it's gonna be a community effort here that the more we can get them to move faster, it's gonna help all of us to, and not cut off our main artery to our town.
Yeah, but what, what about the dirt road, the planes there, is there, is, can that be improved at all for emergency services? Maybe not local traffic, but the fire trucks and ambulances go down?
That's, that's in, you know, we're gonna be putting some, uh, some effort into making that passable for ambulances, the fire trucks, but it's not, number one, it's not a safe outlet onto Route 80.
Maybe have it restricted to emergency services.
And number two, it's really not wide enough for two-way traffic, so we're certainly not going to encourage people to, uh, to drive up and down that road. Um, but we, we are going to make it so that it's possible for emergency service to get through there. That, as Dwayne says, and as Jim, and Jim, and I hope everybody understands, public safety is our number one concern with that. Um, you know, we're fortunate enough to have a firehouse up in Winthrop already, uh, but you know, the fireh, firefighters have to get there. You know, even if there's a firehouse or there's an ambulance up there, the people that man those vehicles need to be able to get to that. So we're working as hard as we can to make sure that number one, the project is done as quickly as it can be. And number two, that while the project is underway and the road is closed, that there are, there are routes that people can take to get where they need to get.
And, and again, I, I appreciate that and Dwayne, I appreciate your input. I never even thought about ambulances or fire trucks. I, that's, that's something that just skipped my mind, I'm just thinking about business downtown, the impact that it's gonna have. But it's also gonna create a crap ton of traffic over Kelsey Hill.
No, it's a, it's a lousy time of year to, uh, to close that road and for people to be, you know, think of all the, all the rides that people take around Connecticut, especially in a time, times like we're in right now, if people just wanna get out of the house. Um, that's the main road into town. But, um, you know, if we close that road during school season, where would the, where would the buses go? It's a really, it's a really, it's a, it's a real pickle and, uh, we're doing our best, and I know the state is working hard too.
No, and again, I understand it's, it's, it's not your fault, I'm not saying that, and you guys are definitely looking out for the best interest of the town. It's just, it's a, it's crazy to have to close both sides at once. I mean, it'd probably make, probably make the job three times longer if they tried to do a single lane, and it's really not gonna affect traffic that much to do a single lane, because you're still gonna have a traffic light and you're gonna have a lot of backups, that's all.
The problem being Gary is the type of structure that there is currently, it has a brownstone abutment walls, so you can't take, you can't take half the abutment down because it's a, a weaved abutment. Um, so it has to be all done in one shot, and to be honest, with the type of bridge that they're putting in there, is three times what's been there for 100 years probably. Um, so I think there's a little overkill there, but I think one of our biggest concerns that we have to, uh, keep an eye on is, is the traffic going up over Kelsey Hill. It's not only the cars, but we have to keep the trucks out of there. We have to keep the dump trucks that are coming from Haynes, we have to keep the compact trailers coming from up and down Route 8, we have to keep them off of Kelsey Hill, and we have to get them to go into Iverton and around, um, a little bit longer for them, but we, we can't have those big trucks going up over those hills.
That was, that was, that was my big argument with the state, and they, especially, uh, the traffic control, and they, they have assured me that their detour, the detour that they are advertising and that they're gonna put signs up, do not go up Kelsey Hill. Problem is, how do we enforce that, you know?
Maybe we could put some signs.
Either have to, we'll put some signs up there that're not for through traffic and that kind of thing, but, um, you know, anybody that's got a GIS in their car is gonna, or GPS in their car is gonna know how to go. So, um, you know, we'll do our best, I know the police will be out there every, every now and then trying to, you know, how, how do you enforce it?
Yeah, I mean, that road, that road was just kind of recapped, but that road won't take much big truck use.
That's partly why we didn't, that's partly why we didn't invest in repaving it until after this project was done.
Angus?
Well, thank you very much.
Angus?
Jane?
Um, are you gonna, you send out little bulletins, I know you've gotten them that, I've gotten them for, oh, we're doing this on this road, are you gonna be sending those out?
Yes.
Great, great, they were very helpful.
Anything else? Okay, let's move on to, uh, item number four, the Economic Development Commission's proposed survey budget. Um, I see Peter's here, and Peter wants to, certainly is welcome to.
Well, I'll start, I'll start off by answering Jane's question, we have not, in the 25 years I've been on it, we have not had a survey, what we did have was a study back in the early, I, I wanna say 2000s. It was by TPA Design Group that just sort of developed some economic strategies for, for the town. That, I believe, is on the EDC website, uh, if you care to read it Jane. And why are we doing the survey? We're trying to figure out, we, we wanna get a diverse group of people from all areas of town. We, we wanna get their opinions so that we can, you know, as a part of a wider strategic planning process, work with planning and zoning to make sure everybody's needs are satisfied with what, what's gonna go into the plan of conservation and development. We're gonna address, Angus, I think, can, uh, you can chime in here, I think some of the issues are residential developments, quality of life, commercial development. And, uh, I don't know, Angus, maybe business needs, small business, education, there's a lot of stuff that we can encapsulate into the survey that will, I, I think it'll yield a good result. Old Lime recently completed one and they, they had a pretty good success rate. And I really think now is the time that we're coming out of COVID, everybody's probably feeling more positive and we, we need to get a statistically valid percent rating in response to this, so hopefully, folks from all areas of town will respond and will do have the advanced CT, do the analytics and let the cards fall where they might.
Right. That's a good description of the whys, and I think probably answers Jane's questions, um, in a couple of spots that I might not have been able to. Regarding the, the cost of the survey, I think the cost is 8,000, might be 8,500. EDC, as, as we explained a couple of weeks ago, has a budget of $5,000 annually. Um, keep in mind that they are entitled to a considerable amount more. They spent some, some money last year on, on signage and, and other, other things. They did not spend all of their 5,000 this year. They've, they've done a couple, a couple of things, and I expect that they're going to, going to do, do more. Um, but because this, this cost of this is as high as it is, and because it is a joint effort by the Board of Selectmen, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the, uh, Economic Development Commission, um, I'm suggesting, and I'm hoping that we're going to, uh, utilize funds from the Selectmen's budget and the, uh, the Economic Development Commission's budget in order to, uh, to fund this survey. We have, we have additional funds in, in the Selectmen's budget for just this kind of thing, and the EDC is going to use all of their budget, um, that's already budgeted for. So we're not spending monies that, that are not already planned on. And, uh, you know, with, with the blessing of the, of the Board of Selectmen, we'll move it forward.
I was, I was just gonna say, I think it's, you know, if it was strictly economic development, then it would be strictly their money or whatever, but it sounds like the scope is for the benefit of the town as a whole.
Oh, it's much greater than just EDC, this is, this is really, um, this is gonna be very helpful for the, uh, for the, the Planning and Zoning Commission in their, um, in their preparation of the plan of conservation.
Sharing of the cost is, it's, 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 in my mind, is legitimate, because it's not just about economic development, it's about the direction that certain areas of town, it's everybody wanting to have some input as to what happens in the town economically, residentially, commercially, you know, whatever it happens to be, so it makes sense to me that the cost is shared.
Yep. I think it is important to note that, uh, you know, one of Jane's questions was, or statements really, to fill up the, um, fill up the, uh, the stores on Main Street, and, and while we do have a couple of vacancies, it, it is important to note that, um, we do not have very many vacancies at all in our industrial and commercial parks. Uh, I know I was trying to have, find someone a small office space and, and 400 square feet, and they just, it's not available in, in, in the industrial place. It's not available for office space here in town. So, um, you know, these are the kind of things that we need to think about as we, uh, are we, are we full, are we done, and just gonna stay where we are, are we gonna move forward? And the POCD speaks to that as it, as they, as it evolves.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the, uh, some of the vacancies in town are, are not because of the way Deep River is, or the way this is or that is, you know, the bank moved out because it was a corporate decision. I understand a couple of businesses closed because they had enough and they retired. Those are beyond EDC or Selectmen or any, anybody's control. And, uh, like you said, the landlords are, are trying to find tenants, and if, if, if the town has reached out, we'll participate as much as we can, but it's, it's not because, at least as far as I'm concerned, or am aware, that it's not because of something that the town of Deep River's done.
So if there's no, uh, if, if there are no other questions, I mean, Peter, if you don't have anything else to say, um, I, I would ask for a motion to, uh, to, to supplement the request, the, the, the cost of the Economic Development Commission's proposed survey.
Is, is there a fixed dollar amount that should be talked about, or?
He can tell us the correct number, I think it was 80, 8,500, but I'm not certain.
7,500 Mick.
7,500, there you go. So we would, we would need to supplement that with no more, with up to $3,000 from the Selectmen, so. Scratch and air phone.
I see Dwayne, Dwayne writing over there.
I gotta, gotta write the numbers down, man.
Always gets those numbers.
Yep.
So I, I will, I will make a motion to, um, supplement up to $3,000 for the Economic Development, uh, survey that was presented this night by, uh, by, tonight by Mr. Lewis.
I second that.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys, okay, um, we've got a, a personnel situation here at the Town Hall that we need to address, um, and, and because it's personnel, we're gonna need to go into executive session. So I'd like a motion from, um, from someone to go into a session, executive session, inviting Joyce Barardis in so she can keep, keep the record of what's going on.
Make a motion, we go into executive session at 7:03 and invite Joyce for record keeping.
Okay, I'm gonna be turning, I'm gonna turn the recording off and I'm gonna ask everyone, um, okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna have to ask everyone to, uh, to leave us to this, we're not, there's no other business before this meeting, so we will not make any decisions during this executive session, so. Um, as, and there aren't really no decisions to be made anyway, we're just gonna have a conversation, so. I'm gonna stop the recording now. Okay, we are, uh, we're back from executive session, I wanna make, make sure that everyone is aware there was, there were no votes taken, there's no action taken, um, and we are out of that meeting at 7:23. There is nothing, no action to take as a result of that conversation, so, um, with nothing else on the agenda, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you everyone.